All right, thank you, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 28, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park's zoning board of adjustment. Mr. Emeloni, would you please call us to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. The fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I ask everybody to please mute their cellphones as this meeting is being recorded by AT-TV. Irina.
Thank you. Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Jill Cutter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glasson.
Here.
Bonnie Upson. John Scully.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Mr. Borabaloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We just have a few housekeeping issues first, just some minutes to approve, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 14, 2022, the regular meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion, Mr. Borabaloni, and I second by Russell Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes memorialized.
Thank you, Irina, and I'm looking for a-
Chris, excuse me, I just want to make note, I don't think I was eligible to vote on that. I didn't attend the meeting.
I understand, thank you, Jill.
Yep.
And I need a motion for the special meeting. Who was eligible?
Yeah, so it will be Mr. Slick, Mr. Harris.
Okay, I make a motion to approve special meeting minutes.
Thank you, and Mr. Slick will second. And we, the members can vote on it, they don't have to necessarily be here for that meeting. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes of 6:14, 22. Special meeting memorialized.
Thank you, Irina. All right, so the continuation of 503 Eighth Avenue. Mr. Siegel, Mr. Harris, please come up. And Mr. Harris, if you could give us a quick overview of what has been transpired at this point, I'd appreciate it.
I sure will. For the record, my name is Andrew Harris of the firm of House of Rosh, on behalf of the Advocate of the Body of Liberty, E. F. A. L. O. C. Briefly, the property for which we're here tonight is at 503 Eighth Ave., Lot 3703, Lot 4. The property itself is 27,450 square feet, it is 0.63 acres. Presently, the existing use of multifamily residential property provides a main house, carriage house, and masonary shed. It's in the R1 residential zone. The disposal, as has been presented over the course of the number of meetings before the board hears, is to subdivide the lot so as to cut off a little portion to make two lots, 4.01, 4.02. 4.01 would be 19,500 square feet, still a substantially large lot, which will continue to house the existing main house that is there, the carriage house. Also to subdivide onto Lot 4.02, 7,500 square foot lot to build in future a single-family dwelling in accordance with the ordinance here in Asbury Park. We've gone through the application, we've gone through various revisions to the plans, we've accepted certain regulations, basically most of the regulations are not all with the boards. We had the portico back onto the building, one of the features that the board indicated might continue. So we had done that, presented that at the last hearing. Because it is an expansion of a non-conforming use, the multifamily house is not in permanent use, so although you're cutting it down, you're not changing actually how the use is being handled on the site because you are making the big size of that lot a little bit smaller, although you're making another lot that is forming, it's still considered expansion of non-conform use in D2 variants. There was some smaller C-variants relief in his testimony regarding to that, that was presented. I presented all my witnesses, the architect, who wanted to read the plan, and had been submitted also our engineer, and we also presented planning testimony to support the application as an expansion of D2 use. Notably, my expert had, who served also as a planner, but the engineer and the planner had made reference to the Raspberry case that supports a D2 type of errors in this particular type of situation when you're taking, subdividing a lot, continuing the existing use, and then creating another lot with that. I don't have any further witnesses, I know the board had asked that Mr. Siegel come to the hearing, they wanted to hear from him. I don't have anything further, but if the board has any questions for Mr. Siegel, he gets here and will provide whatever additional information the board is seeking from him.
Yeah, Peter Siegel, S.I.E.G.E.L.
No, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Beekman. Mr. Siegel, I think that the point of this whole meeting for this particular property is really the subdivision itself. And while your property is being modified in certain respects, the portico, the driveway, the parking area, and all those, those are things that you would normally, I think, would have have done in any case, regardless of whether the subdivision is provided or not. So I think-
Is that a question or a statement?
I think it's a little of both, actually. But I think the ultimate reason for us sitting here is the subdivision. You may disagree with that, but to me, that's really the real reason why we have this particular application before us. So I think the board wants to understand particularly why we should provide the subdivision for this property, and we have questions in regards to that.
Pardon me, one second. Okay, thank you. So I'll start my response in no particular order, but first responding to your words, which were both a question and a statement. So I disagree, no, I would not redo the portico or the parking lot in the absence of this application. I wouldn't, there'd be no reason to. The parking lot functions perfectly well as it is, and so I just wanted to say that. Why you should approve this application, well, I think first and foremost, we have a housing shortage, and anytime we have the opportunity to increase housing supply-
Please sit, Mr. Siegel.
Okay. Making everybody-
I'm gonna revise that.
You're not under trial here.
Yeah, so anytime we can, we have an opportunity to increase the supply of housing in our local market here, I think it's a great opportunity. We have a housing shortage, as evidenced by all sorts of things, I think we're all pretty aware of the high costs of housing, both in ownership and in renting, and it's all due to a lack of supply in all areas of the market, lower-priced product, mid-priced product, upper-end product, condos, rentals, single-family. I spent my life dedicating my area of expertise to this very particular topic of economic policy regarding housing supply and economics, and so I'll share with you that as part of my answer, the first reason you should approve it is it supports the increase of housing supply, which is helpful to our community. Number two, there is precedent, as my professionals have testified, that compel you to consider approving the application. And on the other side of that coin is really there's no reason not to, as supported by the evidence that we've presented.
When we look at the lot, you're looking at a lot which is 27,000, over 27,000 square feet, am I correct?
Correct.
And to the left of the driveway, you have basically what looks like an empty lot.
Correct.
And that, so the streetscape that you have existing basically is an empty lot next to a parking lot, next to a house, am I correct?
Correct.
Does that, by adding that single-family lot, that is, full compliance with zoning orders, does that satisfy to, in a sense, fill up that streetscape and make better appearance, in your opinion, better aesthetic for the neighborhood?
Yes, it does.
Are you also adding parking to comply with the requirement with this proposed development for the multifamily house?
Yes.
And is that a benefit not only to the neighborhood, but also to the use that you have existing on the site under the ordinances in Asbury?
Absolutely, it is.
You mentioned about housing. We are, we have a severe housing shortage, am I correct?
You are.
And is it your opinion that any opportunity within reason where you can provide a fully compliant lot to satisfy zoning requirements in a particular zone, that in a sense helps, although it's one here, one there, one over there, each one helps in dealing with the significant shortage that we have in the housing?
Absolutely.
Anything further?
No, not for me, but the board wants to ask, that's, I'm happy to answer.
Hello, Mr. Siegel.
Hello, Mr. Lewis.
I apologize, I was not here for the first meeting, though I did listen to all the transcripts and the tapes. I don't have a problem with the subdivision, I think you have every right to subdivide. Personally, I don't see it as a high-value, valuable lot to build on, but I think you have every right, from a zoning perspective, to build on that lot. I have no problem with subdividing. My issue is taking your 10-family and condensing it down onto this smaller piece of property, and really coming down to parking, and the proposed parking that was at the last meeting, which is basically having cars parked in the front, in the front lawn, on both sides because it's a corner house. And I just don't see how we can, I don't see how we can continue to fit a 10-family onto this smaller lot, it just doesn't fit for me. So I'm completely supportive of you subdividing and developing this lot. I just, I don't understand, and can you, did you think about reducing the impact of the now reduced lot? Did you look at potentially taking that number down a little bit? You're getting a lot of upside for this subdivision, and I just want to understand, did you look at every possible way that we could not have cars parked in the-
Yeah, legally, you can't reduce the number, all right?
Is he asking about the number of units?
Yeah, you can, because if you're gonna start eliminating housing units and terminating tenants, number one, it's not the right thing to do when you have such a need, demand for housing within the city.
You're saying legally, you can't do, you can't reduce?
To start eliminating housing units with tenants that are existing, you can't just remove them from the property unless you demolish the house, or unless you occupy it yourself under the tenant's laws.
The Anti-Eviction Act is pretty strict in Jersey, so it is difficult to-
That's true.
... to eliminate tenants, especially something that a single-family is, a single-family or a listed to your family is a little bit of a issue.
Thank you, Irina. In furtherance, Andy's comment, and to answer you, Russell, we looked at everything. I think it's fair to say that this application has occurred over, I don't know, four or five, whatever the number is, meetings so far. We thought we had looked at everything when we came in the first time, and in order to appease the board and the community, we continued to make revisions to the application, forcing us to further look at even more things. So I feel confident that we've looked at absolutely everything. You know, we're increasing the parking, which not only do we have a housing shortage, but we have a parking shortage, so I find nothing but benefit to the community for that. If you're referring to additional parking being located on what's now a grassy area, you know, that's how you create parking, I mean, you gotta, you gotta, we were asked to create more parking, so we created it, and it's the only place we could have put it, on unused grassy area that still conforms to all the zoning guidelines. So I feel very, very strongly we thought of everything, and I feel very strongly that we've made every effort to appease the board.
When you're dealing with this type of application, there's a case, the Raspberry case, which is 250 New Jersey Super 324, Zephalovitz, case 1991. And what you're looking at is whether the reduction in the size of the lot occupied by the non-conforming use results in a substantial increase of the impact of the non-conformity on the neighborhood. Is there, by creating this subdivision, is there a substantial impact, substantial increase of the impact of the non-conformity on the neighborhood by adding the one-family house? You're providing parking, you're adding the one-family house, you're increasing housing that is desperate and needed, last thing you want to do is reduce the amount of units that's in that 10, or that's occupied on the existing site. It's a lasting one. And I think this plan satisfies a criteria as set forth in Raspberry. There's no substantial impact on the neighborhood created by subdividing this particular lot.
Does anybody else on the board have any further questions for Mr. Siegel? Board professionals?
Do you swear from the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, the truth? I didn't state any further, please.
Donna Wood, one planner.
Doug Ballen, court engineer.
Thank you.
So, from an engineering perspective, strictly, you know, I can say that our comments have either been addressed or, you know, agreed to be addressed as part of resolution compliance, based on my review of the testimony and, you know, our updated letter, but that's just from an engineering perspective.
I appreciate that, thank you, Doug. Donna, do you have any other further questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm just trying to think, so, you know, we're guided by the master plan and the objectives and goals that are set forth in the land use plan, urban design guidelines, et cetera. And so at the last two hearings, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, what is this, how are we going to balance fitting everything on the remaining lot that's going to contain the multifamily house? Can we still preserve the architectural integrity that makes it a historic structure? So they, you know, as Mr. Siegel said, you know, they revised the plans multiple times, they're trying to accommodate, because from their perspective, those things weren't as important. You guys advised, no, that's important, so they've made that effort. And so there is this tension between, you know, the on-street parking and the off-street parking. How can we accommodate everybody without sacrificing the open space, you know, the yard areas, the green that is both public and private? And so that's the struggle, you have to balance what's more important, to provide a certain ratio of parking as prescribed in the ordinance, it meets all the criteria dimensionally. You know, while, you know, how does it fit, how does it work, does it function, is it, does it, you know, are we talking about an imaginary number? There was a conversation in the first meeting about how many of his tenants actually had cars, you know, right now, the way the property is arranged, it's sort of a, you know, there's parking for 10. In this design, we have more than 10 parking spaces.
Was there 12?
Right, there was a concern about having a two-way driveway on Grand because of, one, the safety issue, one, the visual impact, another, taking away too many parking spaces on Grand Avenue from the public realm. There were conversations about, well, it's great, you're providing more parking on-site, but by taking away on-street parking, I mean, your guys are already accommodated on-site, so is that, you know, should we balance toward, maybe we only need 10 spaces on the site? Maybe there is a justification for a parking exception for quantity? That way we preserve some of that on-street? Again, that's the balancing you guys have to weigh, is, did you hear enough testimony and concerns from neighbors that say, yeah, that's a better solution? This concept of reducing the number of units in the multifamily house, you know, cuts a couple of ways. Obviously, there are certain protections for the tenants. Again, the master plan tells us, we should be providing housing of all types in the city, we need to satisfy a wide range. We've made a preference for single-family detached dwelling-type housing, not multifamily housing. You know, we've sort of directed that toward the waterfront, toward Main Street, toward the CBD, where we have mixed-use developments, that's where the master plan is talking about having new multifamily housing. But it also tells us to preserve existing, you know, Victorian-style multifamily buildings, we want those things to stay, we're not necessarily opposed to those continuing. So again, this application is sort of trying to satisfy those master plan goals. You want to keep the old Victorian house, and you want to keep multifamily in this price point, but you also want single-family houses. And so what they've presented, you know, more or less does that. Again, it's these fringes, these little threads of, okay, what's the trade-off for satisfying all the on-site parking versus off-site parking? You know, having enough yard area, you know, do we sacrifice the portico so that we can do something different with the parking? I mean, honestly, I think the portico helps shield that one parking space that's too close in the front yard, you know, kind of, and we can do things with landscaping so that ones over on Grand Avenue aren't as obvious, we still have that aesthetic, but you guys still have to be satisfied that the purposes of zoning are satisfied, that we're providing, you can thank me later.
I always thank you.
Adequate, sufficient housing and population densities in the city, right? We don't, we don't have a density requirement in the R1, we took that out, we took the FAR requirement out because we wanted to give people more flexibility in using the space we have left, right? Another purpose of zoning is desirable visual environment, boom, we're going to keep the architectural elements, we're going to use landscaping, we're going to keep stuff set back so our streetscape looks as close as possible, right? And then, again, oh, sorry, jumped right in my head, the historic preservation goals. Keep historic structures where you can, encourage their, you know, preservation, their embellishments, their, you know, if you have to add on to them, make the additions complement that. If you're doing new construction, right, we're requiring new construction to emulate existing architectural features in the neighborhood, this building is going to stay and it's going to continue to contribute to the architectural fabric. So we've got the urban design guidelines, the historic guidelines, we've got desirable, so they're hitting all the notes. You guys have to accept that what they're doing is the best, the best way of doing that. If you think there's a better trade-off on the parking by going with 10 spaces rather than 12, you get to save that green space and the portico works better, then that's a justification for the design exception for not satisfying parking requirement. If you think it's more important for them to have the on-site parking, then you don't have to worry about that trade-off. They're doing everything they can for stormwater, right? So they don't need any, you know, they're not creating a stormwater issue even by doing all this other stuff. So the point of that whole rant, I'm sorry, was-
It was not a rant, actually.
Yeah, no, I thank you for very helpful-
The point was, you know, we're kind of, we are at cross purposes. The master plan wants single-family detached housing, and it wants to save multifamily housing, existing multifamily and historic structures. So you've got to try and find that balance, right?
That's what-
We don't have too many of these opportunities, right? Many of our big, old Victorians are on kind of too small lots.
That's true.
I mean, an alternative is, they scrape off this house and make five single-family lots, and then we lose some, you know, low A in rural housing, we lose a historic structure, we get five new driveway curb cuts on Eighth and Grand, you know, so that's, that's what we're looking at. In one way, yeah, that would satisfy master plan objectives, totally, A-OK, but is it really what we want?
I really appreciate your rant, thank you.
As do I.
You're welcome.
It's exactly what I needed to hear.
May I just briefly add one thing?
Sure.
For those in the room who are considering the 10 parking spaces versus 12, may I just remind everybody that of the 10 units that are in the multifamily house, and there's 10 parking spots currently, so there's one space per unit, but we've got some two-bedroom units, and so there is a need for more parking, it's not just two frivolous extra spaces that, who knows if they'll get used and let's just, you know, talk about how to get rid of those two extra spaces. I mean, we're going to use those two extra spaces.
I'm sure the board acknowledges that-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to-
You know, where we can provide visitor parking-
Our greatest concern was actually the parking space that was under the portico.
Yes.
That really bothered us for many people on the board, because it just seemed like it looked a little bit out of place to have the parking space there.
The two of them that are essentially under the portico.
Sort of two, yeah, straddles.
Yeah.
So if they could be reconfigured in some manner? Just, it seems tight.
I don't-
I know, I know, I know.
Everybody's had their big design-
And I'd like to ask another question. Mr. Siegel, when you appeared before the board two meetings ago, we talked about the trees that are on the side of the concrete ramp going up to that parking area, and you had said that, if I remember correctly, that you would preserve those trees. When I look at the lot, I'm confused how you can possibly build a single-family home on that lot with those large trees remaining, and so when I think about that, I then think about one of the other competing objectives of our master plan is a preservation of at least a sense of open space, if not real open space. Again, that's a parcel of private property that you can develop, but it's another factor that, I just want to understand how we fit that in, because I think that with the plans that you have, it will dramatically change the sense of density in that part of the block, so if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so I believe, Andy, she-
Wait, can you just, I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. So there's the three holly trees right in the front yard of-
This is sort of on the western part of the, almost, to be the subdivided-
Yep.
-section.
Right.
And I think that Mr. Siegel had said, when we were concerned about these old, mature trees being taken down, no, I can leave the trees, and I don't know, I don't know how that's feasible, and obviously it's not before the-
It's in the plans, to the extent, maximum extension possible to preserve, protect existing trees.
But those are the key words there, to the maximum extent possible, and obviously we don't have plans before us-
Right.
-about what you're going to build.
Correct.
We'll use every effort to preserve those trees.
But-
And you're in control of that when I apply to build something.
Okay.
Well, no.
Not on private property, or not.
It's so inconsistent, it seems to me to be physically inconsistent with your ability to build on that lot if those trees, I don't know where you would put a structure.
Certainly-
Well, they're not even in the building envelope, the, within this, so the, right, they have to comply with certain setbacks, so there's a front yard setback, two side yards, and- And, wow, I'm...
Looks to me like it's smacked in.
But I recall the driveway is the only place we have.
They're in front of where the building...
Unfortunately, we don't have the plans for that, Wendy.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that you can't make, how do you make a representation now?
They can just pledge, they can't promise. They can just pledge, they can't promise.
But just, the way the trees are, there are three that go from the center to the left and one to the right. You can get a driveway in there and it doesn't, those trees don't occupy where the envelope of the house is.
Exactly. The trees are outside of where the building could be placed. And there are certainly construction methods.
Okay.
But I think what you're looking for is what's the consequence if his efforts... Because we're going to make him put details on the plans for tree preservation and protection. So what's the consequence if those measures fail? I think is what you're more concerned about. Unless you think that, you know, do you feel that saving the trees, is it detriment to the streetscape?
No.
Okay.
I don't. I don't.
So when there's a new house there, it's going to be behind these trees and that's fine?
How you balance all of these objectives? One, increasing housing by adding a single-family house, maintaining the density on the other parcel. Preserving the green space to the extent it's possible.
Yeah, when I look at where the envelope of the house is going to go and where the trees are, I don't see any discrepancy there.
Yeah, I think he just shows how it's possible, but, okay. I just wanted to...
No, thank you for the question. It's an important question.
I think they can make assurances that they'll do the best that they can, Wendy, but...
As long as, he just showed me where it could go and that's, that's all I just want, I need an explanation.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Any further questions from anyone on the board? All right, so I'm going to open it up to the public now for you, Mr. Siegel, for them to question regarding your current testimony again. Please come to the mic in the back. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Siegel and his testimony, please state your name and address. Does anyone have any questions in the public? For Mr. Siegel? No? Okay, I'll close public question. Are you reconsidering?
I'm elected, I guess.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive, so... Can I ask a question of the board?
No, you cannot. Just Mr. Siegel.
I just want procedural assistance, like I don't know, are we going to have a time to...
So you heard Mr. Siegel answer our questions on the board and provide his own testimony as well. Those are the, only way you can direct any of your questions is regarding what he currently stated.
Okay, and will we have a chance to make comments at the end?
At the end, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
What questions do you want me to ask, ladies?
Of Mr. Siegel, of his testimony.
All right, I just...
You're cross-examining him right now.
All right, the testimony was that the community, I have a little bit of trouble hearing up here. So I had a hard time, are you Donna? I had a hard time hearing Donna. I didn't have so much of a hard time hearing you, but did you say that the community and the people in the neighborhood were happy with the amount of parking that you're providing? In your testimony?
No, he really didn't state that the community was happy.
All right, okay. Because it felt to me that you were saying that everybody was happy with the amount of parking that you were providing.
No, he has to address his regards about parking to us, trying to, and to appease the ordinances. It has nothing to do at this point with how happy the public is.
Okay, all right, okay. And then what we're talking about, Mr. Siegel, is that you want to put spaces behind 500 Deal Lake Drive, which is, right? And there's going, are there going to be cutouts, are there going to be cutouts for the, on Grand and on Eighth? An additional cutout for a driveway?
There's a cutout for one-way on Grand. I'm sorry, a going onto the property and then coming out of the property, one-way going onto Great Ave.
Okay, so will there be an additional also cutout on Eighth or no?
Not an additional, no. There's a, currently an existing.
Okay, and it's not going to be, it's not going to be expanded?
No.
Okay, and so the cutout on Eighth, did you have an opportunity to bring some of the board members to the site to see the site?
That's, again, that's...
That's not a question, is it? All right, okay. It's a question to you later.
I would love to. Maybe go have some dinner.
Can we just clarify, though, about the Eighth Avenue curb cuts? There will be a new curb cut for the new house.
The new house, eventually.
But the existing curb cut will remain.
If the subdivision is approved, there will be a new single-family on the property, which will have its own curb cut.
Okay.
Right next to the garage.
Okay, so that'll be, that's...
But again, that wasn't his testimony.
Okay, all right, okay.
So you're asking questions...
I appreciate you guys, I'm new at this. I'm very new at this.
Oh, you're a pro.
I am, I'm very new at the planning board stuff. Donna, would you mind just telling me at the one point where you said...
No, you cannot direct your question to Donna.
No, it has to be directed at Peter, okay.
Only to Mr. Siegel. Well, I'm sorry that you couldn't hear Ms. Miller, but if you could direct the question to Mr. Siegel, perhaps we can help clarify.
Okay. When he's talked about, he answered, Peter, when you answered the board when they asked you, why should we approve this project? At that point, you talked about diversity of housing and then I also think you talked about your qualifications. And then at one point, one of the board members talked about parkland. Did you at all consider the home that you have, the apartment building you have, as being a pretty big anchor for our community? It's a historic property and it has, as one of the board members says, a parkland, open space kind of setting. So... Okay, so if, did you consider maybe it might impact the quality of life of the community, of the folks that live around and even in your building?
Do you believe that the proposed development would have any negative impact on the surrounding area?
No.
Okay, have you spoken to anybody that might have expressed that it might be good to keep that property on that Eighth and Grand to be that anchor property that it is? It's a beautiful anchor property for a neighborhood in a historic district. When you start overbuilding, if we considered this overbuilding or building on...
You're commenting, Ms. Bush.
Okay, I'm making a comment. The motivation, I don't know what to ask here. You guys aren't helpful at all. You're not helpful at all. All right. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to one of my neighbors here.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Hi, I'm Noreen Curry, 500 Deal Lake Drive.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Noreen Curry, 500 Deal Lake Drive. Speaking for myself, and I'd also like to speak for some of my neighbors, I would like to know if it was ever considered to have...
Okay, so you're...
I'm asking a question.
To Mr. Siegel, though.
About his testimony.
About what he stated currently. Anything he stated tonight.
You're cross-examining his testimony and after we're done with him, we'll have a chance for us all to have more of a conversation. But right now, you need to act like a lawyer questioning what he just said.
Yeah, all right. Well, unfortunately, I couldn't make it here on time and I missed his testimony.
Okay, well, you didn't hear his testimony, then you can't, you cannot cross-examine him. Yeah, everyone will have an opportunity to comment on the application itself.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 504 Eighth Avenue, directly across the street from this project. Mr. Siegel said that there's a need for a building to go on in Asbury. Well, there's so much building going on in one square mile.
Okay, so that's a comment.
Well, that's what he said. He said, there's a need. That's what he said, there's a need.
Yes, he did state that it's important to increase our amount of homes that we have, yes. But he didn't state that, anything about what's going on in the city. This is just about his property.
I know that, but that's what's going on and you should know it.
No, we're aware of that, we're aware of that.
Oh, you're aware of it, but he didn't say it. He said, there's a need.
Ms. Moreno, do you have a question for Mr. Siegel?
Well, there's no need on Eighth Avenue, I can tell you that.
Okay, so you're commenting again.
The, he also said park-like setting, something to that effect. Well, I've been there since 1969 and originally was a one-family house.
Okay, you're commenting again.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's the question. I did ask, I said, is there a need for housing?
Ladies.
Yes, is there a need for housing?
All right, everybody's probably got to...
It is a need.
Everybody take a second now, we need to keep some order here, hold on one sec, so... So everybody understands, as we've been trying to indicate, it's got to be just questions only. Don't start off with a comment of any sort. Questions directed to Mr. Siegel about his testimony. We can get to public comments shortly where you can make comments regarding the application.
And you'll have four minutes to comment then, each of you. So, anyone else in the public that has any questions for Mr. Siegel's current, tonight's testimony? All right. Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Karas, back to you.
I have no further witnesses, I have no further evidence to offer.
Would you like to make some closing comments on this before we deliberate?
I will be very, very brief. Ms. Miller basically summed up what I was going to say. She very simply had gone through the requirements under the master plan, under the, you know, the positives and the evaluation of this entire application. As I indicated under the Raspberry case, which I mentioned before, what you're looking at is whether or not in deciding this application, the D2 variance, whether or not the expansion of the, what they say, expansion of a non-conforming use, because it's not a permitted use, results in a substantial increase of the impact of the non-conformity on the neighborhood. By adding a one-family house, is there a substantial increase of the impact on the non-conforming use? So you look at the non-conforming use that exists. By adding the one-family house next to it, is that non-conforming use, is there a substantial impact on that? Based upon the testimony, submit, there is not. I think what you're doing is actually decreasing the impact by adding that additional parking, fixing up that particular site, making the parking a lot better, preserving, which is very critical, preserving that structure. It is a historical structure. And I know there was a significant effort within Asbury Park to be able to preserve these types of structures. That is being done and the property is actually being cleaned up and is, and you're going to end up with a better property. A property that works a lot better and that is maintained and that is preserved, while allowing also an additional single-family home to add to the housing stock within the city, which, in my opinion, based upon the testimony, is desperately needed, particularly today. With that being said, I'll submit and I have no further comments on the application. I would ask the board to approve the application based upon the testimony that's been presented in the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karas. All right, so at this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment before we deliberate.
Ladies, you're on.
All right, all right. Before you get up, please state your name, your address. Each of you who would like to speak will get four minutes to comment on this application, either for or against it. Irene, are we ready?
We are.
I can say anything I want now, all right?
Rita, please state your name and address and then Mr. Beekman's going to swear you in.
Okay, Rita Moreno, 504 Eighth Avenue.
Can I just raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give us, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I can say anything I want.
In relation to the application, yes, Ms. Moreno.
I can tell my life story on Eighth Avenue.
Not anything.
Okay, I've been living there since 1969. The property that Mr. Siegel owns used to be a one-family house. Now it's a ten-family, we, you know, we live with that. But to live in a residential neighborhood, historical supposedly, and have a ten-family house across the street from you, it's really, cars going in and out all the time. It's going to get worse if you put another piece of property, another house on that property. And there's, and who's to say they don't have two cars? People that build a house, everybody has two cars, a husband and wife and then children. And they all have, I know, I have a friend that has seven cars next to him in the driveway and I hope that doesn't happen to us because it's not, it's just not a good idea to build another house there. There's all those driveways. We have Deal Lake Drive, we have the Towers, they have two driveways. Mr. Siegel has an oversized driveway and then everybody else has a driveway. Most of them are for one car or two if you park them back of each other. That's enough cars on one street. You can never get a parking place on Eighth Avenue. And there's only five houses on one side and four on the other. And you can never get a parking space. And now to add another house on that lot, who's to say if they're going to have two or three cars? You don't know. And you're going to cut another driveway? And that means losing another space on Grand Avenue or Eighth Avenue, whichever. It's almost impossible to park now. We're supposed to be in a residential neighborhood, I hope. Or I pay taxes to that effect. And there's no need for building another house on Eighth Avenue. They're building all over town, every place you look. Main Street, Cookman, 1100 Block, of Kingsley Street, Heck Street. All these buildings are going up. There won't be a need for any more housing and why should Asbury Park be the one to do it? Let somebody else do it in another town. It's congested enough and we love it. We love the summer, we love all the people that come here. But you can't build another house on Eighth Avenue. And as it is, Mr. Siegel owns both sides of the street, so, I mean, he should be happy with that. He owns the apartment house on Eighth, which is sometimes a headache that we all feel. And sometimes there's problems across the street from me in the 503 Block. You can't help that. There's tenants there. Who has a dog, who doesn't have a dog, who has a kid? It's really a nuisance, especially me. I have a one-family house and I've lived there all these years, very happy about it. But I don't want to see another house across the street from me and those trees and bushes taken down. Right now, it's a nice view and I like it. But other than that, I just don't think Mr. Siegel's on the right track with this one. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Anyone else for the public? Please state your name and address and you'll get four minutes to comment on this application.
I don't think I'm going to need four minutes, but Louise Murray...
I don't think I'm gonna need four minutes, but Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue. I happen to live right next door to Mr. Siegel.
Just one second. Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm making a comment, so whatever.
That's certainly fine, go ahead.
Okay. I happen to live right next door to Mr. Siegel's apartment. By the way, he does a very nice job, no question about it. However, he has parking spaces for every one of his units, and there is definitely an overflow. They're in front of my house, they're across the street, they're... I mean, one weekend, it was like they crammed six spaces and only four spaces, but that's beside the point. My question is, my husband, since passed, was a surveyor. And my question is, I can't visualize how he's subdividing that lot. I don't have... I never saw the plans, so this is... So I'm walking into this like blinded, okay? Because I used to see a lot of subdivisions, you know, the frontage, the backage, you know, the... How much, you know... Right away, you have in the front... I don't even know what kind of a house he wants to put on it, all right? However, you wanna cut into Grand Avenue, check your Bradley deeds, and there it states, "Mr. Bradley, the founder of Asbury Park, said, 'None of the streets should be disturbed.' They should remain the same." It's a Bradley de-restriction. So I don't know what everybody's doing. They built houses, they do this, they do that. Nobody's following Bradley's restrictions on his layout of this land. My husband said he surveyed all through New Jersey, all through other states. Never has there been a town as laid out, as beautiful as Asbury Park. And I have to add one other thing. He was voted by the engineers of New Jersey and the surveyors of New Jersey, Surveyor of the Year. So that goes without saying. The man knew what he was talking about. So my question is, that subdivision, I haven't seen it, and I don't see how it even fits. I don't know what kind of a house he wants to put on there, I have no idea. But I certainly don't want cars facing us on Grand Avenue or whatever. I don't know what the plan is, I really don't. But the idea of cutting into Grand Avenue, disturbing, putting another... Nah. I can't abide by that.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Carrie Butch, 500 Deer Lake Drive.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Thank you, you may.
I want you guys to come to that area, and I want you to see what it looks like. It's the... Literally, if we put houses on that space, we're not gonna have any really green space in Asbury Park. Right now, we have people in the backyard of Peter Siegel's building, growing vegetables. It's a beautiful place that you can... Everybody can walk along, everybody can drive by. It's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful historic house. And it's wonderful that ten families live there, and we're happy with them, I'm happy with them. The motorcycle, maybe not so much, but... Nice people, working people, good people. Are we, in Asbury Park, a creature of our own success? Are we gonna overdevelop now? Are we gonna build on every single piece of grass? So that it's not comfortable and it's not lovely and it's not... Are we gonna now, with our property at 500 Deer Lake Drive? When we bought there, it was never a problem parking. I could park anywhere, never a problem parking. Now, none of us have driveways, none of us. So there's 30-plus families that are living right behind this entity that are parking on the street. Right now, I park at least a block away, fine, sometimes two, fine. When you get into three and four and you're trying to carry things home, or the weather is raining and it's horrific, it really changes your quality of life. And also, just driving around in a circle like it's Hoboken happens now. And I don't know, some of you are on the parking committee, find out how many parking tickets are in that neighborhood, because they sit there and they know somebody's gonna be screwing up and parking on a yellow line or parking wherever, because that's where they live and there's nowhere to park. So, we have no choice sometimes but to like push the envelope a little bit, and we're getting hit with tickets, a million tickets. If you look at right now, 500 Deer Lake Drive and that area of Grand Avenue, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. We've already gotten our... The state of New Jersey, when they did the redrawing of the... When they drew the parking spaces, they made them huge. So they already took away some of our spaces. So, I mean, right now, we've been living there. Our quality of life absolutely will be impacted by this, absolutely. So you're making a decision to change the character and the feel of Eighth and Grand. It is a beautiful neighborhood. Build, 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 it's not gonna be a beautiful neighborhood. And the other thing too is, what happens when you put... Right now, we all get along, but when you put a house right next door to ten families, and some of them have motorcycles, and some of them have, you know, teenage kids, and a lot of them have, what do they have, golden retrievers? It's not gonna be so friendly. They're not gonna be so friendly. Because when you buy them, when you build a million-plus house, you don't wanna hear stuff like that. I'm telling you, I've seen it. So, you decide, you are the keepers and the bearers of Asbury Park. All of you have a responsibility to the people who live here. For the people who live here, who have invested, who have made it what it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Denise Nadell, I live at 504 Eighth Avenue.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanna talk about some safety issues. Adding that driveway onto Grand Avenue, we have so many accidents there as it is now. It's like a raceway. I mean, there's one almost every day on Grand somewhere. And that is gonna be a very, very bad spot to have a driveway with people coming around those corners off of Deer Lake Drive. So I just wanted to bring up that issue, because we see it and we live it every day, the accidents that happen. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Norine Curry, 500 Deer Lake Drive.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I agree with both previous speakers. Number one, I hate to see every square inch of greenery disappear. I did not hear Mr. Siegel's testimony, but I would love to know why he finds it so necessary to build another house in that spot. And the other concern, again, I'm gonna repeat what she said, was the safety issues. That if that is the driveway going onto Grand is an exit driveway, the visual has to be blocked, because there's a curve on 71. So people come speeding around that corner, they won't see anybody pulling out of that driveway until it's too late, because there'll be parked cars all along. And I don't know if your plans can be changed at this point, but I would think it would make a lot more sense to have that, if there has to be a driveway there, have it be an ingress and the egress on Eighth Avenue. The other thing I don't understand is, existing, there's an egress and an ingress on one driveway to Eighth Avenue. Why was that changed? I mean, wasn't there enough room? Even though he changed the parking spaces, wasn't there enough room to, you know, to keep it that way? No. Okay. Well, at least make it an ingress, because the exit on Grand will be very, very dangerous. And that's all I can say. I don't see, I really don't see any reason why the application should be denied. But, because, I mean, there doesn't seem to be anything really outstanding, other than quality of life. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on Mr. Siegel's application? All right, we'll close public comment now. So back to us on the board. Does anyone have any comments or that they would like to make in regards to the application? Yes, no?
I just wanna clarify, there's no deed restriction on cutting a curb, cut into Grand Avenue, is there?
I mean, I don't ever recall that, even from my days back in the eighties.
And did we, from an engineering point of view, look at egress? And possibly going the other way, was there any advantage or disadvantage to this?
I mean, it's a fair point. I think exiting on Grand, there's... In order to make it better, there could be loss of more parking spaces.
But... An ingress is a left-hand turn from Grand?
Correct. It's a fair point as well.
Only left-hand turn.
So if you had an ingress, you would be encouraging left-hand turns off of Grand?
Correct.
To create, you know, those backup problems and sort of abilities between...
That's a valid point too, Donna.
You'd have to, realistically, you'd have to inch your way out and nobody would be pulling you fast out of there. But it is... It would be a slow turn to get out of there and make sure that new cars are coming in your direction.
I'll start off. I'm not... I really am not fond of this, I'm not. Personally, I wish you were turning the existing property into a premier ten-family property that had one entrance and exit. And it would be a beautiful property if you just took everything you have right now. Personally, that's how I feel. As a zoning board member, I don't think I'm gonna be able to deny you, but I'm not a fan of it. But from a zoning perspective, I don't have enough grounds to deny you.
Anyone else?
My feelings are very similar to Russell's. I'm struggling with a way not to vote in favor of it, because I really feel that it will create a density in that area that is not really benefit to the community. But I don't feel like I have strong enough grounds to say no.
Okay, so, are you finished? Okay, Mr. Siegel, when I go through Asbury and I go down by the beach and I see huge, huge buildings going up all over the place that aren't even finished yet, and I'm looking at maybe 100 or 200 apartments, and I read in the paper about everything is going bigger and bigger, and then I see you just asking for one house, I have no problem with it. And I thank Ms. Miller for giving us an explanation how you have satisfied everything we have asked for. So we can't ask you to do any more than that, and so I'm in favor of what you wanna do. Thank you.
I'm hesitant on this application, Mr. Siegel. I feel that Asbury has gone through so much division, that we're constantly cutting up our properties, our properties have been subjected to so much. And to me, to lose more green space is almost a travesty, because that's what helps protect our environment. It's what beautifies our neighborhoods. I am just very hesitant to approve this application. Only because, you know, these beautiful homes, this beautiful, used-to-be-single-family home was just an incredible Victorian at one time with a huge, beautiful, almost, as the public has stated, almost a park-like setting. I'm really torn on this. Only because I've seen so many of the houses that have been broken up into tiny little apartments. Personally, I think it's our job to try to protect some of it and prevent overdevelopment. And that's where I'm coming from right now. It's not personal. And I appreciate everything you were trying to do for us, Mr. Siegel. And I appreciate you coming here always before us to provide new applications and new directions that you wanna go in with your properties. I just am very hesitant to approve it. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I hear people saying they're happy to have a new single family. Okay, I agree, it increases the housing stock. And single family is a way to go. I really like the concept of building a single family. Oh, that's terrific. I'm just concerned about losing more green space, which is something that we need to protect. And that's where I'm right now. So, do we have a motion for this application?
Okay, I'll put a double vote. I make a motion to approve Mr. Siegel's application.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Harris and a second by Mr. Lewis. Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Joe Potter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim Slyke, how do you vote?
So torn, I'm sorry. I vote no.
Wendy Glasson, how do you vote?
No.
John Scully, how do you vote?
Yes.
Russell Lewis, how do you vote?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. Adelani, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, we have four yeses and three noes.
And it needs five yeses as a D variance, so the motion fails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Yes. I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Thank you all in favor. Any opposed? Five-minute recess starting now. All right, everyone, let's get back to it. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Joe Potter?
Here.
Tim Slyke?
Here.
Wendy Glasson?
Here.
John Scully?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Adelani?
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Irene. All right, so, Mr. and Mrs. Barnett, 1205 Pine Street. Mr. Ryacek, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Pleasure.
I just have a point I wanna bring up. I wanna make sure I'm able to listen to this application, because I might be within the 200-foot zone and I did not get a notification. When I took my property at 1117 Third Avenue, which has 100 feet frontage on Pine, I believe I had to notify this property.
Well, if that's the case, though, we wouldn't have jurisdiction to hear this anyway. Is that correct, Mr. Beekman?
But let's verify that. But let's, let's verify that.
Well, I checked the notices. Everything appeared to be in order with the notices.
Okay, so 1117 Third Avenue was not on that list?
But that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be on the list.
Oh, wow.
There's that.
It does, because the tax assessor provides that list and certifies the list.
Yeah, right.
And you're not on, it's not on.
Okay.
So, there you go.
I bet I'm 225 feet away.
And you reviewed all the notices and we have jurisdiction.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman.
That it wasn't lost in the mail.
And sorry, Mr. Riecheck, please proceed.
Oh, thank you, thank you. John Rahatcheck, Pavlov Rahatcheck, on behalf of Scott and Andra Barnett, they're homeowners. They love Asbury Park and they wish to have a home that's more amenable to their retirement. So, it's just going to be the two of them, and this home is going to provide a much more livable space. So, I have Mr. Serangle here as the architect, and Mr. Barnett is actually going to, he's going to operate the computer.
Oh, okay.
He's the tech support, and he's going to show the properties within this 200 sphere that it's a mixed, it's a mixed development-type scheme. We feel that the rendering that we have is aesthetically compatible with the neighborhood. We are putting a porch on. And we do understand the waivers, and there's, there is a concern. We do have, just for the board's information, we do have an engineer available and who's also a professional planner, and, but was not available tonight, you know, given the review letter that came, but would be reviewed if the board feels so, we can bring him next time and have him finish the application.
We'll, we'll see as we progress along, Mr. Riecheck.
Okay, thank, yeah, that was as to the, the planning aspects and the negative and positive criteria. I'll start first with Mr., I think we'll give an overview, so we'll start with Mr. Barnett.
Okay.
Okay, and this is, this is the architectural rendering, the 3D rendering?
Yes.
This was prepared by Mr. Serangle, is that correct?
Yes, Serangle Architects.
Can you show us what?
I'm sorry, if I could just swear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you currently live, Mr. Barnett, do you currently live here?
We do.
You do?
We bought the house currently as a summer residence. We lived here full-time in the summer.
Let me just swear a minute. Oh, yeah, yes, okay.
Do you swear from the testimony about the give the truth, the whole truth, and not put the truth? I do. Name, just state your name, the record is filling your house. Barnett. Thank you very much. Continue, Mr. Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. No, no, I appreciate that. As I was saying, you currently live there or you purchased it as a summer home?
We purchased it as a summer home. We've lived there full-time in the last three summers, and after the first summer, we decided we'd want to make this our permanent home and live here here around.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Barnett, could you show us a photograph of what the present home looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, dude, this is, this app is just doing very weird things to my computer, so I apologize. I have to, I have to blow this up.
Oh, that's cute.
I guess I'm not going to be able to work.
Then he wants to take, put, stand it on his side, but a lot of it.
This is a little bright on the screens. Irina, can I steal your laptop?
Oh, I.
Put it away. Sorry.
It looks like we have it, we have it up here.
I, I, I can't make out what he's on. I don't know, he's just, oh, I think he's just trying to use his library.
I don't think that's it.
I think this is, it's not, it's not yet. It's not blowing up on the whole screen. I have it working fine.
This is such an interesting.
So, if there's some stuff up in the corner, but.
It's still trying to.
Yeah, I have. Okay. I think, I think that's good enough.
Can't explode that.
Can the board see it on their own screens or?
Yeah, we have it on.
All right, I'm good.
There you go.
Is this part of the package that was submitted?
I don't have those.
These pictures are not part of the package.
No, no, I don't think we have interior.
The interior.
And I don't think we need the interior.
While we're doing, do you want to mark anything?
We're going to have to hire somebody for just for the tent part.
Did you submit this as a PFO?
This was, this was.
These are in our package.
It wasn't.
They have it in their package.
The pen or pen stick.
Make that bigger. Not that one the next time.
No, it's not, it's not allowing me to make anything bigger. I, I will do this. I'm sorry. So, this is our ensemble, right? That driveway is our neighbor's driveway. And just for purpose of identification, so this has been submitted to the packet, and we have a copy of the market. Are these pictures outside the packet?
These photos are not part of the.
No. And I don't think we should continue.
Oh, were you trying to show these as examples of?
Yeah, there's other, other properties within the 200, 200 feet.
We can show Google down.
We, we did, just for the board's information, we did walk the neighborhood and we did note there's quite a few properties. There's carriage houses that, that were divided off and made into separate lots, and they tend to be contiguous with one to two-foot side yards to the next property. So, there's quite a few of those in this neighborhood. The neighborhood is an older neighborhood, for what Mr. Barnett will testify to, where the houses were built around 1900 to 1930s, and some of them were grander houses on the major boulevards that had carriage houses in the back, but over time, they would subdivide off the carriage houses, and they'd actually turn it into residential uses, you know, similar to the Beers and McLean type cases. But not as jammed up as the Madison Square Beach run, of course. So, one of our variants is for a three-foot, a three-foot side yard, but we're able to show there's not overcrowding with the next property, but we'll get to that photograph, I hope, which will show the next-door property on the right side of us opposed to the left side of us. The lot, I, as, as I overview, the lot is a 50 by 100-foot lot, so it's narrow and warm, and it's a 5,000-square-foot lot, and that's required for this, for this neighborhood. There are some lots that are bigger and there are some lots that might be smaller. But we're proposing an addition to the property to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the eye and a floor plan that'll work much better than the floor plan that was put in there around 1930. And I believe my client will be able to testify from his research that there were additions onto this house over time, as was typical of that type of construction. Sometimes the addition of a kitchen, addition of a bathroom, as, as, you know, families expanded. So, how are we doing?
You're doing a good job stalling for me, but when I, when I go to present this on the large screen, it's not going to show up. We do have a set of pictures. I think, this is a Google sheet, so I can share this with anyone that has a Gmail address. If you want, I can share it with you right now so you can see it. But again, when I blow it up here, it looks fine here. When I blow it up, it gets very, very small.
They think this is mine, but it's fine. Or we can see it as it is.
All right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so we, we took some pictures of houses in our neighborhood that conform to the, the things that we're looking to do. So, the first set of pictures, our houses within our area, are in the neighborhood that have detached garage to the house. So, that's the first five photos. The next set of photos is a picture of our backyard that shows the structures on, on either side of our property, where the structures are literally up against our fence. So, on one side, there's a garage, there's a detached garage in the back of the property. And on a house on Fourth Avenue, they build a carriage house, a garage, and apartment building that goes up against the, the left side of our property. The next set of pictures shows houses currently on Fifth Avenue, around the corner from us, that shows the, the short distance between the two houses. That's the next, the next two pictures. The two after that, this is showing, so on our, on the right side of our property is our driveway, which is where we're proposing the garage. On the left side of the property next to us, to our right, there's also a driveway. And so, there's, there will be a 12-foot distance between their structure, their house, and our structure, or actually our property. And then another four foot between our property line, where our, our structure will end. So, there will be 16 feet between our structure and our neighborhood property.
Just for, just for context, this house was not centered on the lot. It was actually placed further over to the right-hand side of the lot.
Is she, is she going to testify too?
Yeah, she will testify.
Just to keep the record.
For the rest, I'm sure you have to be.
If you want to, I can swear. So, do you swear from the testimony about the give the truth, the whole truth, and not put the truth? Name for the record, please.
This is Andrew Barnett.
Thank you.
Oh, you have to come up closer. You might pull your chair up. Okay, Mr. Serangle is going to give up his chair.
The house, as the house exists right now, there is a driveway on the right side of the house. And what we're proposing to do is build on top of that driveway, so we're not changing that footprint.
Why don't you describe more of what you want to do with this addition? Don't worry about the pictures for now. Tell us, tell us what you want to do.
So, the, the goal is to build a garage on top of these, the top of these is the driveway with the garage, with a bedroom and after bath on that garage. And then also to extend the back of the house by a short amount, so that we can build out a larger kitchen. We're going to have a book of floor plans on the first floor. We also want a full bedroom and bath on the first floor to accommodate our elderly parents who may come to visit. Would also be a home office for me. I, I work currently from home. It'd be my office or spare basement.
And that back of the house, there is a deck right now. So, there already exists a deck, and we're not even taking the whole space of that deck.
Yeah, we would actually be removing the deck. The other thing I should mention is that, so, we don't know who did this. It was not the owners before us. It was probably the ones before them. There was a porch in this house. They enclosed the porch and did a very mediocre job of, of building it on a very cheap foundation, so that.
In the front of the house?
In the front of the house. So, that already slopes today. That, that would need to be remediated. Also, in the back of the house, there was a powder room at some point, also not on a solid foundation, and it's very, very poorly constructed. That also sits. So, we would be destroying those two areas completely and rebuilding them to make them more structurally sound.
And to restore the porch, which would restore the character of the house.
I, I do like the, the open porch concept. Yes, absolutely, Mrs. Barnett. I'm struggling a little bit with the roof designs. There seems to be so many kinds. I, I, I'm a little overwhelmed. Mr. Serangle, perhaps you could describe why?
Do you swear from the testimony about the give the truth, the whole truth, and not put the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name for the record, please.
Larry Serangle, Serangle Architects.
Is the board familiar enough to, to, we need any background for Serangle or?
Please, if you could give us your credentials, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, um, starting with high school, I went to Don Bosco Technical High School for four years and had an architecture program degree from there. Then I went to Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. I have a Bachelor of Building Science and a Bachelor of Architecture degree, and I've been.
Good school.
What's that?
Good school.
Great school for architecture and hockey. And I've been working since 1978 and.
Have you appeared before any zoning boards?
Oh, yes, for many years. And I've been licensed since 1984. I have my own practice, Serangle Architects, since 1991. And we've done a lot of work with commercial work.
Terrific, Mr. Serangle. Please proceed.
Yes, just starting out the project and how we could arrive to the idea about the inclines. When we started the project, we realized the house had the gambrel kind of roof right through. In the front, it was a little hip roof porch. The back of the house was an existing powder roof, but a gable roof. And what we tried to do here was, we did schemes where we were trying to make all different gambrel roofs relate to the project, but then it got a little like overkill, and even to make the side of the house have a gambrel roof, the span is too large to match up to the front. So, we came up with, you know, the porch, which has the hip roof, which is already existing there right now. We wanted to do like a softer roof going up to the house. We stepped back the garage so it wouldn't seem so massive. And on the front, in the back of the house, we have like the, you know, gabled, donor counted projections. On the side of the house, we have the gable, and all those gables have the same pitch of the current gambrel roof that is there. We also thought about the neighbor to the right of us. It's almost like the, the side here reflects.
It almost seems like a hodgepodge of, of different styles to me, Mr. Serangle. I, I, I'm struggling to say, is this a Dutch colonial or is this a, I mean, what is it?
The original was like a gambrel roof, Dutch colonial, but we kind of kept, you know, just making the gabled roofs become the theme as the other parts of the house. So, this Dutch colonial, you end up losing square footage, because you just have like this whole.
Oh, I'm aware. I have a Dutch colonial.
Oh, so you know what it's like, yeah. I mean, we could easily adapt, like, for example, the front view here, the front door, but that could be, that's the only place we found that maybe a gambrel roof could work to respect the front. So, would that be something?
Mr. Barnett, are you able to put that rendering up? Let's look at that.
I mean, there's also a metal roof you've got going on there.
The metal roof's been deleted. It's all going to be shingles. Everything's in the shingles.
Okay.
So, can we just talk more about the porch?
Sure.
And what you're doing with what's there now and what it's going to, I mean, I have, I have it here, but can you just verbally describe, is that, is that now enclosed porch being removed?
Yeah.
And you're going to reconstruct and then add in front of that the open porch?
Right, as Mr. Barnett said, anything that's there now, like the powder room, will be demolished, but the existing front porch is comprised by the front of the living room that we're proposing. So, we're going to, you know, build new foundations, new structure there, and the new porch will basically project seven feet from, you know, the existing part of the house.
Seven feet from potentially where the existing.
Right, it's almost, the temp is trying to bring back what was probably there years ago. They have a nice front porch, you know, connect to the house. Once again, there'll be no more, there's no metal roofing. It's going to be shingles.
We're giving back some of the living space that's currently inside and then adding a little bit more for a porch.
Right.
No, I understand that.
But the living space that you have now was originally the porch.
Right, right.
So, you're choosing to keep that as living space and not to return it to a porch?
Yes, a little bit.
A little bit.
A little bit.
Eight, nine, nine feet, one inch.
Actually, the, the porch that was closed off, cut off the whole living room for any kind of light, and it just has like, you know, basically an office, and they had this oversized entry that had a couple levels that were tripping hazards.
I'm just having a problem with the further encroachment towards the road.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you're aware of the house right next to you that's going through renovation. I mean, you, they're kind of sister houses. They, they match in scale and. They, they match in scale and in size and in placement. There's beautiful symmetry to those two houses. And that house next to you is going through renovation right now. And they have opened their, their porch back up.
Right.
And it looks really good.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I also am having an issue with the, the encroachment in the front of this. Completely supportive of renovation and, and bringing the house up to current living standards, just having a hard time with the, the front of this house.
And the front yard setback.
And the front yard setback, especially since there's a, there's a sister cottage house right next door where the frontages are basically equal. So I'm, I'm having a hard time with that.
Would this, would it be possible to make this equal in front yard setback to the neighboring?
Well, so if we, we could look at that, if we make it equal, then in order to have the amount of space that we're looking to have on the first floor, we'd have to take out farther than the backyard and.
And that's what we typically see here. Ninety-five percent of the homes that we see here, it's, you're, you're working into the backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which we're doing already.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, we can go, we have room, so we can go back even further. The way that we looked at it, and we do agree that the house next door, right now, we are fairly level with them in terms of the front. Their house is also larger than ours, so it's just, they do have more square footage inside the house.
How much more?
Um, I don't know exactly how much more.
Not much more.
It's almost twice.
No.
No.
No. It is not twice.
It's not, it's not twice as big, but it's.
No.
It's big.
Our house is currently 1,200 square feet. I believe she's 1,800, 17 to 1,800. So it's, it's about 25 to 40% larger, I believe.
They also have, the second floor comes forward over the front porch.
That is correct.
Right.
So overall.
Ah, I see.
The other aspect too is that if you look at, and these are part of the other pictures in the other document, Ridge Street, Comstock, and also the rest of Pine, all of the other houses, if you look, they're all much, much closer to the curb, to the sidewalk than even we would be with this proposed addition.
Yes, there are examples of frontages on, all throughout the town.
And right across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, that's a unique building.
That is probably the most unique building in the northwest side. Yeah, I, I don't know where that building came from. It's unbelievably unique. But again, we have, we have two homes that were probably built similar, at a similar time, that are matching up. And that is one of the things that we really like to see here, sort of the prevailing fronts of, of buildings or homes, sort of keeping that integrity. There are two cottage houses on the 1100 block of Pine Street, just one block over, right next to mine, that are even closer to the street than your house and the house to the right. But they're built at the same level, which gives symmetry and architectural, architectural symmetry to, to the block. And considering that there's only three homes that front, and your home and the next-door neighbor's home are, are very symmetrical right now, I think it would be visually pretty jarring to see a home that would be this built out of this nature out that far. I'm just giving my, my opinion.
And that's about the curve.
It's about 13 feet from the curb.
In fact, our, our view on it was, if you look at, so Mr. Bernak agreed with what you're saying with the house, it needs to be more realist. If you look at all of the other houses on Pine between Fourth and Fifth, and we look at the symmetry of the entire block, I think we actually fit in very nicely with this proposed architecture.
There's only three homes that front on.
Uh, there's only three homes at front, right? So I'm looking at the, the four homes on each corner.
And they're all very symmetrical, but those are side, those are the side homes. Yes. And if you look at the two homes on Fourth and the two homes on Fifth, the sides, they're symmetrical. They line up, so there's symmetry.
They disagree with you, Russell.
Must be the news.
I hope that makes it into the recording.
Please proceed.
And I'm, I'm still struggling with your roof design, so. I'm sorry.
Can you show them what you showed me? On the, on the roof, can you show them what you showed me?
Yeah, well, I was explaining that. The roof here, we could actually do the gambrel kind of roof, might be a little quick redline. It's unofficial. If you could see from here.
So what are we just referring to with this?
It, it. This is part of our packet, I believe, correct?
This is just something I had sketched up in response to the idea that.
Oh.
You could make.
But shouldn't you have a copy of that as well?
Yes, and we'll.
Well, basically, this group could be made to look like the gambrel roof, so we could pick up that detail in the front. So that, that would be a good way to do it. And in the back, I mean, if that's a concern to you, we could do the same thing with the other kind of projection from the master suite.
Yeah, okay, A2, A2. You gotta mark A2 on there.
Okay.
I guess that's, I, I mean, that's one way to at least have a, some type of symmetry.
Right.
I, 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 because, you know, you have a point that is, doesn't really match the design of the Dutch colonial, but.
Before we go any further.
Three times.
You swear from the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth?
I did.
City neighborhood record, please.
Tom Miller, fourth line.
That's on.
Yeah, I just realized, I had to direct the advocate, actually testify. Sorry. You know, I don't know that I have a problem necessarily with a little gabled dormer if it matches the angle of the gambrel at the peak. That happens a lot with, with gambrels where, you know, they, they put either shed dormers or little gable dormers on or to the side. I think the, the, you know, the cross roof is the thing that's more visually.
I just feel.
Especially in elevations.
There's just such a hodgepodge.
So.
Cross roof meaning on the side of the house?
Yes, you've got the gable intersecting the second gambrel. And then when it, you're not parrying it through.
Right, since it's a higher pitch, we have to like splay it down to the existing roof.
So I think that's, I think that's really the.
Yeah, I've done that before.
But so, but we have another, we have another issue here. So the board, and hopefully, grabbing the consensus here, there's a, a desire, rather than to put the front porch on the front of the building, to restore the existing front porch and maybe get more floor, floor area over it and in the backyard rather than pushing the mass. Towards the road. Towards the front and making it, because that, that porch roof has a very long porch roof now. It's, when you look at it on the side, it's going to seem off balance.
Agreed.
Because it can't get high enough for, where it ties into that front wall. So, so I think there, again, there's more of a desire, both from the perspective of maintaining the front, prevailing front setback line of the house next door, even though it has a different type of porch mass orientation. Again, the, the house next door has the second floor over the porch, which is not what we typically do. If they match that, would that be okay? Even though that would create, still create the front yard setback issue because they, or it might create a new front yard setback issue because you're bringing the building wall into the front.
I, I think we're more concerned about like moving the, the mass to the back of, of the house.
Okay. So if we just reopen the porch and leave the existing second floor where it is, that's more desirable. And then put more building floor area in the backyard. Yep. So that's, so.
That's one issue.
That's one.
One's one issue.
Is that a major concern?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's our first major issue to overcome. If you can't live with reopening the porch and, you know, and pushing everything backwards, we may have an insurmountable problem.
So I just want to add a couple of thoughts.
Please, Mr. Bernak.
Why we're involved with this proposal. So the first one is we are thinking back already about how to be, for, for the actual state of the facility like we have. The original concept that we have was leaving the porch, or putting the porch in its original state by having it be a wraparound porch, so it'll go around to the side here. And the issue with that is, we don't, we would have to require another variance on this, on this.
On the side.
Setback. And we didn't want to have to do that in addition to the right side setback. And so we felt that this was a really nice compromise in that the front door is actually exactly where it would have been was originally. And that part of the porch is the original porch. So yes, we are extending out, you know, for the eight feet or nine feet or seven feet that, you know, where the bay window is. But that was our compromise for not doing a wraparound porch. It's still having a very high-sized welcome porch. So that was our rationale. We understand, we, we want to adhere to the aesthetics of the neighborhood for sure. We also had, you know, brand ideas, all the things we wanted to do. And a wraparound porch didn't seem like a reasonable possibility. We didn't want to go to the point of getting all the way to the right side and the left side of the property. And this seemed like a reasonable compromise to us.
I understand that.
And also, I know you're concerned about the porch. By stepping back the house, the addition, we still felt that it was not being as massive. The porch is very open, you know, in terms of its layout. It looks bigger there, but it's only seven foot deep. And it does extend back a few feet, like a covered entry, if you see the plan, to the door, to the living room. So it is like an L shape, believe it or not. I can't see it as well there.
The other thing too is that also in our backyard, the goal is, it's a relatively small lot. We want to have as open a backyard as possible.
Right.
And given that we have structures on both sides of the lot, of our lot, of the backyard, you know, making that backyard even smaller for us kind of closes up.
You're losing a lot of space.
So we're trying to keep that as open as we possibly can, which is why we decided to get rid of the deck and only build out on portions of the deck. So we're not going as far out and the deck aren't as big. To give ourselves a little bit of.
We understand why you're doing it. It's understandable, yeah.
We were looking for that balance.
Is there?
So are we.
Is there a foundation under the existing deck right now? Or would you have to build, would you have to build up a, a foundation for it?
I think there are piers.
There, there, there is a, there, around the perimeter, there is a foundation. There's nothing in the middle area, which is also a big problem. We want to make that all a foundation.
Yes.
And we want to put, put in all that better tighter area.
So my concern, our board professional, I think articulated it best, is, is the roof. When I look at it, it, it just looks out of balance to me. And, and you, Mrs. Bernak, you had said you're trying to balance things. For me, it's hard for me to look at the rendering and balance that roof with what the existing home looked like. And, and I understand what you're trying to do, and you said you had the slope, but you couldn't bring it all the way across, but it, it, it doesn't balance to me. It doesn't look correct, like, when I look at the street view.
What if it was straight across? I've seen many, many Dutch colonial revivals where the addition is just straight across.
Straight across, meaning?
Like that, what I showed you in the picture. It, it just goes straight across. And even, there's one on, I'm sure you have a picture of it, across from the high school, the white one.
Oh.
Through the Broadway, of course.
Oh, great.
There's a white colonial, like, it's straight on top.
It, it's hard for us to suggest what you should or shouldn't do. Do you understand that, Mrs. Bernak? It, it's not our job to tell you how your architect should design something. We're here to, to comment on what we've seen currently. And for us to say, do it this way, isn't really the best approach for us to take. But, you know, we can only tell you what we think at this point. And, and in terms of, so far what I've heard from the board's comments, there are some roof concerns and designs with that. And the front porch has to be taken back some. And, and you have to somehow either get the space more from the back of the yard or provide a little more of the setback in the front of the yard. So, you know, we're, at this point, I, I don't think you would want to proceed any further until you, you and your architect had some time to discuss some more things.
And we haven't, we haven't spoken about the garage.
Yeah.
No, and that's, that's, that's an issue for most of us. Having the garage in front of the house, it, it is, it goes contrary to what our, most of our homes have. A lot of us have carriage houses in the back, which is acting as a garage. And the cars go to the back of the house, not to the front of the house. So, I, I mean, there, we often have, we have some several designing.
Guidelines.
Guidelines to provide, but, you know, at this point, looking at this design, I don't think we can proceed any further until maybe you have some more discussions with Mr. Serangle.
Okay, may I ask a couple of questions, Chris?
Sure.
Um, I have two questions. One, why did you change the windows on the side of the house? Where you had all square windows, rectangle windows, and then on the side? Okay, those two, on the second floor, those two windows are different, which takes away from the uniformity of the house. And my second question, I agree with Chris, you've got a lot going on here. How are you going to handle the drainage as far as gutters are concerned? Because you've got water that's going to be going in every different direction, okay? Which is going to lead to maybe flooding in your driveway, also in the front of the house.
First of all, the other side windows are part of the master bedrooms of vaulted ceiling. So we were trying to take advantage of having the space and letting a little more light in. I mean, that's just an architectural feature that we had, that we thought would work nicely. In terms of the roof drainage, we are under the minimum amount. We have an engineer who looked at it, who was impressed tonight, but we do, you know, make the minimum for the runoff. Most of the water will run off into the, you know, the street to the front. And we'll have all the gutters and leaders properly detailed in design on final drawings for that.
Yeah, we need to see how the water's going to come down, in the direction of the water, so it doesn't mess with your neighbors, okay?
I'm sorry, what's that?
So like when your water runs off, it doesn't run into your neighbor's?
Oh, no, not off, away from the neighbor's.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Get into her area.
We don't have the opportunity to put a garage in the back. There's no, there's no room back there. And, and by doing this, we're keeping the same covered footprint that we track in currently cemented driveway right where that garage is.
And if we did try to put a garage in the back, and I don't think it could without the room, we'd literally be on top of the garage next door to our neighbor property.
So the code allows them to have the garage attached. It just has to be setback five feet from the front building wall. So they would only need to offset a little, a few more feet than it is currently shown in the drawings. They don't have to have a detached garage, but I understand the preference for it. To me, looking at it, it's just very, like, welcome to the garage. And it's, and it's very different on the streetscape from everybody else. Historically, what.
It's very, yeah, it's very different.
Although we did, do have pictures of other garages right down the block.
And, and we understand that there are other homes that may have a garage in the front, Mrs. Bernak, but each application has to stay on its own merit. So, and, and we, we appreciate that. And, and believe us, we, we really do.
It is setback from where those windows on the left are of the porch. We just also setback the front door. So, but it is five feet back from the front building of the house.
Yeah.
And we can reduce the porch to, move the porch back. We, we, we feel, we feel.
Why don't, why don't you have a discussion? We'll take a five-minute recess, and, and you guys can make some further decisions, We'll take a five-minute recess, and you guys can make some further decisions, and we can proceed from there. So I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
A second.
Thank you, everyone in favor?
Hi.
I need a close, five-minute recess starting now. Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
John Scully.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Christopher Avalon.
Here.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right. So you've had some time to discuss what the board has said, and maybe you can give us an idea, Mr. Serangle, Mr. Riedt, how you would like to proceed at this point?
Well, actually, we probably could, we could make those changes and come back with another set of plans, well, modified plans by the next hearing date. Mr. Serangle feels that he could produce that. We just wanna make sure we have the things that are acceptable to the board.
Sure.
We understand that the front-facing driveway, even though it's not fully acceptable by the board, if we move it back five feet, we'll meet the ordinance. So we would meet that. And then there's how we're gonna handle the porch, that it's, it's in symmetry with the next door property in terms of setback from the curb. The curb or the sidewalk, actually. But I'll let Mr. Serangle, you know, state what he, and we'll have to get the input of the Barnets if they're good with that. I know it's a disappointment, they were there a year ago, had other bigger plans, and they cut this down, but we'll get it there. Go ahead.
Yeah, the idea, it seems like you want us to push the porch back. We can do that. And, but you're saying also the garage would have to go back, too?
In order to meet the ordinance, I believe it's five feet from the house line.
Donna? The garage wall has to be offset from the front building wall by five feet.
Okay. I probably could do that, move the porch back and still maintain that five feet that you're asking for. And by going back with the porch, I may be able to reduce the width of the porch, not cut as much into the living room, Scott and Andrea, so.
And are you trying to stay within the same sort of footprint that is currently on the plans for the first floor?
No, we would wanna kick back another five feet.
Okay, so you're gonna possibly encroach it to the rear or setback?
It's more acceptable than the front yard.
Yeah, right.
I believe it's gonna leave, what, a 20-foot, 20-foot?
Right, we would have a 20-foot backyard.
Please, Mr. Barnett. Please proceed.
Yeah, I'm curious, for, you know, we wanted to adhere to what the town's looking for, what fits in with the community. We've already done a lot of compromises ourselves. I know that has no effect, no bearing to what you guys all think we should do. Is there any flexibility at all with the front porch, so that instead of us having to push everything back, we can maybe split the difference? Because, again, we have been looking at all of this, we've been reading as much as we can. My wife and I have never done this before. This is the first time going in front of anyone to ask for a variance for our own. This is not something we know how to do, it's not something we're good at, and personally, not something I like. And, you know, we know what we want, we want what we want, but we also want to do something that fits the neighborhood. So I understand that you're looking at this, saying this is our first cut, and if you, you know, we've made some compromises, everyone we have. I am really frustrated. I feel like we've already given a lot. And if I have to push the entire house back seven feet, we're gonna lose all, we're gonna lose a big chunk of our very, very small backyard, where we are surrounded on both sides by structures. So, and by the way, there's, the house next door just got the approval to put another house on Fifth, so we're gonna lose that view as well. So we are gonna be surrounded by structures on every single side. We are taking a house that is in pretty bad shape. We actually had.
Hold on a second, you don't have a structure to the south of you.
We do have a structure to the south of the house, the carriage house. There's a garage and a parking, right?
In your backyard?
Huh?
But that was existing when you bought the house, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's nothing, there's nothing new going on, I'm just saying. What's new is the house that'll go on Fifth, but there's a garage.
But that's a whole lot away from you, right?
It is, but we have, we have a really nice view right now, going all the way up to sunset, that would be blocked by a house. No big deal. There's a right for them to build a house, we don't have any issues.
We went to that meeting, we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't quite argue at all. All I'm saying is, we have a garage literally to the right of our, at the back of our property. We have a carriage house, a garage and a carriage house, literally on the left of our property. We've got a very small backyard to begin with. So every extra foot we push back on the house, it just gives us that less room for us to enjoy any personal space for ourselves.
We're not making you do anything. They're your choices of how you, you know, want to build your house, but when it, but our job is to keep the character of this town.
Well, but they are asking for something from you.
Oh, I know.
Variances.
That's right.
So that's why you're having these negotiations.
Yes, we are, yes.
And if you're saying it's a hard no, if we don't.
It's not a hard no, but you're taking a two-bedroom house and turning it into a four-bedroom house. You're taking a 1,200-square-foot home and turning it into a, what, a 2,800-square-foot home. We're not, we're not demanding you do that. It's up to you to alter it to fit, you know, our needs and your needs as well. But we're not saying you have to push the house back. But we do want to have the prevailing setbacks at the front of the house, especially this particular property. Where you are in the house next door, I think it's really important that the houses have some sort of symmetry and language to each other in the front of the house. What you choose to do with the back of the house is, as far as my, my opinion, a lot more open. But I think the front of the houses need to look like they relate to one another and have a certain Asbury language to them.
And to Russell's point, you know, again, we're not telling you what to do, but it doesn't have to be so big to go so far into your backyard. It could be smaller and still livable. You know, it's your size that's pushing it that far back. Just.
Scott, now, just a sidebar. I know I can push this back and make it work without even going five foot back.
Just be a smaller porch.
Yeah. Make a couple feet into the living room, you'll still get the side chair, maybe your piano would move over. But I know I can take a shot at it, not to lose the back. You worked with me before, a million sketches very quickly, so. And also, maintain the five-foot setback from the porch to the garage, so keep that footprint.
To restore the porch where the door is, you walk right into the stairwell.
Right, that's, that's a critical, yeah.
So you can't do that much.
Right. I think, Mr. Serangle, you're also gonna address the roof line, too.
Yeah, the roof lines also will be addressed.
Right. I know the board was concerned about it, they wanted something that would be more compatible with the original house. You feel you can meet what the, what the board wants on that?
Yes.
We could come back next, next month and have the plans ahead of time.
I would like to also ask if you could reconsider all the different window designs?
Yes, yeah, definitely keep consistent, you know, keep the windows with the grills. Yes.
Donna, has the ordinance changed on garages attached and detached recently?
Yeah, that was part of the amendments.
Amendments.
Is it last year or two years now?
It was last year, but it seems like we spent so much time on them, Donna, but I can't remember all the changes we made, but I believe it was one of them.
Well, yeah, because we were meeting in person, it was before 2020.
It was before the pandemic.
Yeah. So, right, so as part of the master plan process, there were recommendations made about building design or design, streetscape. And so we made tweaks to the new design regulations, which are the things that, that govern, you know, renovations to houses as well as new construction. And one of those changes was, there's a preference, a desire for garages in single-family residential areas and uses to be detached in the backyard. But there was a compromise sort of made because we know that, you know, on some of these lots that are only 5,000 square feet, that's, that's tricky. So they were, we permit the attached garage, but we don't want it right at the front of the house. We want it to be set back, so it needs to be at least five feet back from that front building wall. So, again, it was sort of a compromise. I think we could have worded that differently so that we get a better effect. But again, it was this balancing of, you know, if it's a townhouse, if it's just a single-family house, how do we want this front-facing garage? Because we really didn't want front-facing garages. We want them to be rear-loaded off an alley or, you know.
And for someone like myself, who's been on the board for almost 18 years now, old dog new tricks, I've been arguing for detached garages for most of my zoning career, so I.
As a former Northwest resident, I can hear you.
Yeah, it's, but if that's the ordinance, then that's the ordinance. I like it, but if that's what it is, that's what it is.
We also changed the fences.
We did. Yep, we did.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes progress.
But yeah, so that's the thing, you know, the Barnets wanted to show us all these pictures of those other garages and things, and, yeah, we know they exist. And the city, you know, made a conscious effort and said, we don't like that. We're changing the rules. And so that's why they, we made the amendment.
It destroys the streetscape a lot. There's so often that the people put all those cars in the driveway, and they're not even in the garage. There's just like two or three cars in the driveway, so, and it kind of destroys our.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was one of Bradley's original design concepts when he designed Asbury Park. He wanted all the carriage houses and buggy houses to be off the street. He wanted light and air. He didn't want cars parking in the front yard, which we now have a prevailing, lots of people just parking in their front yards.
But obviously, though, when Bradley was around, he was talking more like horses and buggies. It wasn't really designed for the mass cars that we have today.
And the lots weren't cut off the way they are now. Our lot's been obviously cut up all the time. It's just a very small lot, surrounded by other buggy cars.
Correct, you are correct, yes.
But it's our job to try to preserve.
As much as possible.
As much as we can, the distinct environment that we live in, and Asbury's very distinct.
So I guess we could come back, is it going to be a hard no on the garage if it's set back, or is that?
Not if the ordinance is on your side.
Ordinance permits it, yeah.
Also, you mentioned trees. You can plant trees in our drawing.
You're not required to plant trees. Are they? Not on private property.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Well, we're happy to plant trees.
If you want to plant trees on the green strip in front of your property?
They are required to provide a street tree.
Tree, tree tree is different.
So is that on the apron?
It's on the, the grass that's between the street and the sidewalk.
That, your, that side of the street is a very difficult place to plant, but I can help you with that. I tried to plant a tree in front of your existing house 10 years ago, and the woman who owned the house denied that request. So unfortunately, you could have had a 10-year mature tree in front of your house, but it was, it was denied. I'm serious.
As you can tell, Russell's on the environmental shade change committee.
So what's the next date?
Yeah, what's the next?
So I don't think you'll have revisions in Pine for the next meeting, which is July 12th. And then our next available meeting is not until August 9th.
Yeah, that's more realistic.
And that's the only meeting we have in August, so.
I won't be here then.
You're not gonna be here in August. I'm not here on July 12th. And I, I would like to be here for the next meeting, for, because these are my neighbors, and I would like to be here for them.
Oh, we're talking August 9th, so. All right, so are you amenable to August 9th?
Yeah, we carry the notices.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to carry.
Thank you very much.
I'll second. Wait, 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 wait. I'll make a motion to carry 1205 Pine Street to August 9th, 2022.
I'll second.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
John Scully.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
And Christopher Avalon.
Yes.
Application carried to August 9th, 2022, without further notice.
Without further notice, of course. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Close, out meeting adjourned.
Thank you.